Good. Hello? Can everyone hear me okay in the back? Yes, good. Okay, good evening. I have 6:30. We're gonna go ahead and get started. For those that are able, if you wouldn't mind standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Really enjoyed all the little voices helping us with that tonight. That was very special. Okay, I have all board members in attendance, so I'll call the meeting to order. Dr. Phillips?
Thank you, Ms. Wieldon. We like to start each meeting by reminding ourselves of our mission, vision, and core beliefs. And so I'll read those aloud to you, all of our guests tonight, for a packed house. The vision of BCSE is to be the choice to learn, work, and play. And our mission is to develop expert learners by partnering with our community to invest in people. Our core beliefs are that we all can rise to the challenge of high expectations, that learning is most effective when we have choice, flexibility, and see relevance, that we thrive when our social, physical, and psychological needs are met, that our community and school district are stronger when we partner with one another, that we flourish because of the diversity and variability in our community, and last but certainly not least, that our democracy and democratic institutions are strengthened by civic-minded citizens.
Thank you, Dr. Phillips. We have quite a few recognitions tonight. This is very exciting. I believe we'll start with the 2025 Education Hall of Fame Award. Mr. Schultz?
To kick off all the festivities and appreciate the full house, we wanted to present the 2025 Education Hall of Fame Award. For those of you that aren't aware, this award's purpose is to recognize outstanding and extraordinary contributions to BCSE by a BCSE teacher, staff member, or administrator. Just to walk through the overall process, applications were given by November 1st. A committee reviewed these, and we really appreciate all the applications that were provided to us. And today, the award goes out. And I want to thank the committee members that are here, if any of them are. Brett Finley, Principal over at CSA Lincoln, Toby Heron, the parent representative, Janice Montgomery, and Luce Elena Michelle. I didn't see any of them, but I wanted to make sure I didn't miss them. I want to appreciate Ms. Carla Udi as the recipient, and welcome Blake Manuel to introduce her for this award.
All right, thank you, Mr. Schultz and the board. Before I hand it off to Mrs. Udi, I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is Blake Manuel, and I'm an Assistant Principal at Columbus East High School. But 12 years ago, in 2013, I had probably my favorite title of being Mrs. Udi's student-teacher. And so from that, not being from Columbus and coming to Central Middle School to experience what teaching was like, I had a firsthand experience of just seeing Mrs. Udi work and interact with the students and be a pillar for her school. And I got to see that firsthand. And I got to see that over the next few years as a staff member at Central, as a teacher, and then later as Assistant Principal. Just continuously seeing Carla not just interact with the different student teachers that she had or the different staffs, but really just make an impact on all of the students that she had. The running joke amongst everybody with her team and Mindy and all the students is that calling her dinosaur and all that stuff. But they say that endearingly. And it's kind of a running joke, too, that she's always the first person in the parking lot, and she's always the last one to leave. And after 42 years as working at Central Middle School, it's just an honor to call her a friend and a mentor. And I cannot think of a better person deserving of the 2025 Education Hall of Fame Award. And so before I hand it off, I just wanted to read some things that are gonna be remembered on the plaque that you'll have in a plaque that'll be at Central Middle School. And so these are some of the things that your peers, your friends, your daughters wrote in their recommendation for you. And so first, it's beacon of influence. Honest, faithful, and loyal. Exhibits empathy and compassion. Leadership beyond the classroom. Student-teacher-mentor. Ignites curiosity and critical thinking skills among her students. Four decades of dedicated service to BCSE as an educator. Passion for world cultures, US history, and current events. And then a quote that'll be on here is, "Her extraordinary commitment, mentorship, and educational philosophy have left an enduring mark on BCSE." So with that, congratulations, Mrs. Udi.
Well, thank you, BCSE, for giving me such an honor. I used to joke with people about, you know, after teaching here for so long, I would hope I'd at least have a plaque on a bathroom stall or something. I never, my whole dreams would have thought of this. But I want to thank everyone who helped with the recognition process. I know there's people that wrote letters, and I've got to see the letters, and it's very touching. As well as my children that participated in that effort. I have sincerely loved being a part of this corporation for my 41 years this year. I love middle school. I think part of that is because perhaps I have a little bit of a middle school personality. I think that goes a long way. Sense of humor also, obviously, very important. But I have truly loved all the time that I've spent with like over 5,000 students, hundreds of students, athletes, when I coached in my first 10 years, which seems like a lifetime ago. And then, of course, all of the teachers and so many of the teachers that have come tonight. I can think of stories with everybody, stories with children, and then also funny stories that we've shared. We do a lot of teasing at the middle school level because humor is important. And sometimes, that's what gets us through a day when it's a tough day. But my team that I'm working with now currently has been also an inspiration for me to continue to be the best that I can be as well. And we have different generations represented from someone that's my children's age up to dinosaur age. So they've been a real inspiration for me as well. I was really touched that Mrs. Hagan is here. Willis Hagan, her husband, who is deceased, hired me, and I remember so many stories from Willis Hagan, or what I used to call him Willie. I can remember the day that I had my interview, and I was so nervous. I drove a Gremlin. It had no air. I was coming from Ball State. No air conditioning, so I had to roll the window down. But I had puffy hair, and I'd spent a lot of time on that hair. And so I wanted the window down. I sat straight up in my seat so I wouldn't have sweat on my back. I got down there an hour and a half before my interview. And there was some seating outside, so I parked and I sat outside. Later to find out that Willie and Mr. Sell were sitting across at the Olympia watching me the whole time. So I'm glad I didn't embarrass myself. But Willie and I shared a lot of good stories, and I truly do miss him. I don't know. I know I could tell you a lot more stories. And I could also write a book on what you can get a middle school child to do for a Jolly Rancher. That might be in the works maybe when I retire. But I do want to thank everyone for coming out and supporting me tonight. And feel a lot of love. I really appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Okay, next, I believe we have Southside Spell Bowl Champions. Mr. Beckmeyer, Ms. Duco. I didn't say that right. I can tell. Jack's gonna be mad at me. Duco.
All right. Dr. Phillips, thank you for having us. Members of the school board, it's a pleasure to be here, giving us the opportunity to celebrate the accomplishments of these Southside Mustangs. We talk about personal best. And each of these individuals did their personal best and then combined that together to do their personal best for their team. And so we appreciate all of the efforts. I couldn't be more proud of Mrs. Duco, our longtime Spell Bowl coach, who's not allowed to retire, and then all of the many members of the team. So we appreciate them very much, and I'd like to introduce them and have her say a few words.
All right. Standing in front of you are 13 amazing 5th and 6th graders. They had tough shoes to fill because last year, we were state champs as well. And we only had one student return. The rest moved on to Central, which I think you guys celebrated a little while ago. But they worked hard. So our season started in August. We had 50 tryouts. These 13 made the team. They hit the road running. We had 21 tests from August to November. We had 12 practices. I threw in crossword puzzles. I threw in extra credit. Extra credit, you'll see on our shirts. One of our words was cumulonimbus. And I have a black golden doodle named Nimbus. So that's how he became our mascot for the year. So the night of the event is actually hosted at Southside. We had 14 teams compete. Six were in the green class, eight in the blue class, which is the class that we compete in. We won our area tournament. And then out of 104 teams in the blue class throughout the state, we had the best score. So very proud of them. And yes, personal best is what you would hear out of my mouth. And that's exactly what they did. So I will let them take the mic and introduce themselves.
I'm Yashika Gargia. I'm in 6th grade, and I was one of the Spell Bowl members.
I'm Diarami, and I'm in 5th grade. I was one of the Spell Bowl team members.
I'm Stavias Varesh, and I'm in 6th grade.
I'm Resha Bhagavan. I'm in 6th grade.
I'm Ravant Sharma, and I'm in 6th grade and part of the Spell Bowl team.
I'm Rishan Jagampudi, and I'm in 5th grade, and I'm part of the Spell Bowl team.
I'm Subu Subaya, and I was part of the Spell Bowl team, and I'm in 6th grade.
My name is Swasti Timwande. I'm in 5th grade, and I was part of the Spell Bowl team.
My name is Sanjana Manjanata, and I'm in 6th grade, and I was part of the Spell Bowl team.
My name is Victoria Q. Nellis, part of the Spell Bowl team, and I'm in 6th grade.
My name is Bella Zhang, and I'm in 5th grade, and I was part of the Spell Bowl team.
My name is Mashida Pell. I'm in 5th grade, and I was part of the Spell Bowl team.
My name is Vernika Prabhu. I'm in 6th grade, and I was also part of the Spell Bowl team.
Very cool. Congratulations.
See you next year.
Way to go. Great job, guys. Congratulations. Thank you. It's amazing. Okay, Mr. Miller?
All right. Thank you, Dr. Phillips and the school board, for recognizing this amazing accomplishment by the girls' wrestling team winning the state championship in the first year. I'd like to thank Coach Olds and his staff. They did an amazing job. Obviously, when you're starting a new program from scratch, you're gonna have a wide range of skill levels. And we had some girls who were wrestling in our club program for the last few years, and we had a few girls who have never wrestled before. And Coach Olds and his staff did an amazing job working with each individual wrestler and helping them to get better every week. I told Coach Olds I wouldn't steal too much of his thunder talking about the team. But kind of one quick story that really shows you what type of team this was. A few weeks ago, on a Friday, when we had some bad weather, the girls' team were wrestling in Mooresville for the regional championship. They had a tough week the week before in sectional. Didn't win sectional, but really did a great job in regional. We had a lot of champions, and that really pushed us to a state championship that next week. And the next day, that Saturday, after wrestling a long, hard regional, bad weather coming back, getting home late, a lot of the team came to Franklin to support our boys' team in the Team State Duels. And that truly shows you what type of team this is. They support each other. They support others in this school, and they truly embody what it means to be a Columbus East Olympian. I'll turn it over to Coach Olds.
I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight and showing support for these state champions. Before we meet them, I have some people that I have to thank. Coach Knoblet for helping with everything that happened this year. Wouldn't be possible without them. I need to thank my wife, Emily, and my son, Braden. They've sacrificed a lot. Their sacrifices allowed me to coach these young ladies. And they gave up their time and gave their unwavering support for me and the team. Next, I'd like to thank the parents of these athletes. Without their commitment to the goal, long hours in the gym, miles driven, this would never have been possible. I also want to thank the athletic department, the school, and the fans. They showed up to make sure this was a special year, and I just hope we represented them well. Now, I want to thank this year's state participants and then say a few words about the team. So step forward when I say your name. First up, Tina Keditz. Madison Mount. Maddie Schwarzentrieber. 7th place finisher, Eden Knight. 4th place finisher, Madison Schrader. 3rd place finisher, Grace McMahon. State runner-up, Sage Plummer. And state champion, Monica McMahon. One more time for all the state qualifiers. I was asked a question after we won. How did a group of girls with very little experience come together to win a state title? Over the next few weeks, I had time to think about that question. And what I came up with was six universal truths that we all learned together as a team. Number one, big success starts with big dreams. Without dreams, you can't create a path to success. Number two, belief. Believe in what you're doing. Believe in yourself. Believe in your teammates. If you believe, you can achieve. Number three, consistency. Without consistency, dreams are just dreams. Make a consistent effort every day to get better. Don't focus on the early wins and losses, but grow every day to be the best version of yourself. Number four, dedication. Every person in the room dedicates themselves to getting better and making their teammates better. Success isn't built in a day, a week, or a month, but small daily gains are the key to reaching your goals. Number five, accept failures as inevitable. Use failures to find improvement and take your abilities to the next level. And finally, be passionate about what you're doing. Passion will push you forward when things get hard and lead you to your dreams. There will never be another first-time IHSA team state champion. These girls have earned everything they've achieved. Nothing was handed to them. I hope they never will forget. They'll always be champions. Thank you.
Hey, can I say you ladies even add tough handshakes? I very much appreciate that.
And I can't help it. I have to add just a quick comment about Ms. McMahon, Monica's speech. I told... So these poor kids... I've been going to the state championship for the boys for a lot of years just because I'm a fan. I don't have any wrestling background, but I love the sport. And these poor kids, when they win a state championship, what happens is the guy from TV sticks a microphone right in front of them. As soon as they're finished, they have a short break and then starts asking them questions. And these poor kids, for the most part, very unprepared, and you can tell. And plus, they're worked up because they just won a state championship. And that happened to Monica. And she... I've told so many people this now. They're tired of me talking about it. She gave the best speech that I've ever heard any state champion give following her win as an individual state champion and did her family proud and her school proud and her community proud. If you haven't seen it, try to find it on Instagram or whatever social media app you are on because it is a tremendous testament to the whole team, but also the way that Coach Olds prepares them, the way that her family prepared her. And I have to tell you also, I felt so sorry for her sister, who was getting ready to have her picture taken because she was on the podium for the previous weight class. And when she talked about her sister and what she meant to her, oh, she just lost it. And then so she was all prepared for a picture, but then by the time the picture came, she was, you know, kind of... You could tell she had been crying. But tremendous, tremendous achievement there. And I don't think very many of us get to say our community has the very first state champion in IHSA history. So congratulations to all of you. champion in IHSA history, so congratulations to all of you.
We are going to move on to school board member reports. Mr. Major, can I start at your end, please?
Yeah, the redevelopment committee commissioned met last week, and we had a lot of stuff going on, sworn a new commission member, former mayor Jim Lenup. Talked about parking garage, we talked about new owner for the Orange Leaf location, new owner for the, or leasur, lesser for the subway location, the downtown interest plaza, the Hamilton Center Chillers, and the Arcadia Drive Department of Public Works projects. Health Trust also met last week, had a great conversation, talked a lot about how we finished up last year and what risk looks like this year. We're probably going to have another meeting sometime this month, next month, to talk about some things that will help lead into managing the risk for this year. So we're doing everything we can to keep costs down as much as possible, but acknowledge that cost has increased, so we're just trying to figure out the best way to make everything great for all of the users of our insurers.
I connected with Mrs. Sarah Dunlap to talk about CYD and get our first meeting on the books, so I'm really excited to talk about the work that they're doing and learn how I can hopefully help and create a positive impact. Reviewing their current initiatives and projects and what their goals are for the year. Also communicated with Deep D about the foundation and reviewing what their current works have been, and hopefully will be able to assist in that capacity as well.
No meetings, nothing to report this evening, thank you.
So I did not have any meetings. I did participate in a closeout session for our exit conference for our financial audit. I want to thank Mr. Brenniger and Paula Bitros for doing such a fantastic job with the audit. There were no major findings, I think there's always opportunities for improvement, they dig deep. I thought the things they found were valid and we'll get better from those, so I just want to thank the team for putting in the time with that.
I didn't have any meetings, but I do have an ISBA legislative update. There are hundreds of bills, I'm just going to throw out three of them here. House Bill 1001 is the budget, it's pretty early, but I'm sure that will have some impact on what we do here when it comes out. House Bill 1002 is a lot of educational, has a lot of educational impacts, and one I'll throw out there is that it would remove, under its current version, it would remove the requirement that the state secretary of education has an advanced degree or experience in education. And House Bill 1544, if this went through, this could have local impact for us, it allows a, it would allow a 25% tax credit for donations to a public school foundation. And more to come.
Mr. Glick?
A couple of weeks ago, we had the superintendent advisory council luncheon with a whole number ranging from all levels of staff. And one thing that stuck out to me was Jen Morley, who's, she's a counselor at CSA New Tech. There's not much to really report, other than what she said kind of stuck out with me and where she led, I was hoping that's where she was going. They had their open house for eighth graders, and they did something different this year, they had the seniors lead it and the students lead it. And that's exactly what I was hoping to go, she would go with that. And making their job easier as staff by letting the students do it, it sounds like they created more work for themselves, because they had a massive number of increased applications. So they're going to have to do a little bit of finagling there to figure out how they're going to do it. But that's exactly what we need to see, empowering our students to step up and help with enrollment.
Thank you. Mr. Schultz?
No meetings on the CCIC, I believe it comes up in the next couple of weeks, and then we just covered Hall of Fame, so we're all good.
Thank you. All right, Cabinet reports.
I'm colorblind, so to me it was green. Thank you for participating in today's audit. I would love to take credit for all the work that went into it, but it was the two-year audit for '22 to mid-year '24, so Dr. Phillips and Paula, they did a great job setting it up for me, and it was a good audit and we're very proud of it. Looking at our financial report for 2024, revenues for the year were very strong. In the education fund, we were up five and a half, or five and a quarter percent over 2023. The largest part of that increase was due to the interest income that we discussed last meeting with our investments, as well as our basic grant was higher than we had anticipated because we had good ADM numbers. In the operations fund, revenues were up about 7%. That was, again, interest income and also our local income tax revenue was higher than we had anticipated for the year. In the referendum fund, we were up 2.5% in revenue over 2023. Property tax revenues were, again, a little bit higher than we had anticipated. Strong years, we had $96 million in revenue in the education fund, $36 million in operations, and just over $10 million in the referendum fund. Our education fund expenditures, our salaries were up just over 7.5% over 2023. The biggest part of that is the salary rate increase that was as part of the CBA that was done, as well as the additional staffing due to the cohorts at North and East. And benefits were up about 4.5%, which ties into the salary increases. And our other expenses were up about almost 20%, a big, but the dollar-wise, it's not as much as the other increases show, due to some under $10,000 tech supply purchases, as well as some testing material purchases that we had. And then the transferred operations, we had discussed at the last meeting as well. For the year, we expended $96,700,000 in the education fund budget. When you take out the transfer to operations, which isn't a part of the approved budgeting through the state's eyes, salaries and benefits were 95% of those expenditures. Operations fund expenditures, salaries were up about 9.5%. That is, again, due to salary increases, as well as the fact that we are nearly fully staffed across the board within operations. We have an operations team meeting last week, and as Dr. Bozeman went around the table talking to each of his team leads, nearly every one of them said, "Fully staffed, fully staffed." Going to be fully staffed after we fill these positions on Friday, so it's a great thing. The salary increases that the board has put into place over the last few years has really tied into that. Benefits were up just a little over 2%, and our other expenditures were pretty much flat for the year. Expenditures in the operations fund overall, $35,126,000, just over 4% increase over 2023. Referendum fund expenditures, salaries for our teachers were up 3.8%, support staff 2.3%, benefits 4%, safety and security, increase of 40%. A big part of that was some bus purchases that we had had in 2024, and our STEM labs were up about 12% over the previous year. Total expenditure within this budget was $9.2 million, $9.254 million of the $9.255 we had budgeted, so. Our fund cash balances, when we look at our reserves, we look at them in a couple of different ways that Dr. Phillips has told you about before, but I'm going to follow up, because I'm new at this, with you guys. So within the education fund, we receive funding from the state on a monthly basis, so we like to have a reserve of about two payrolls that fits that month time period in case there's a delay in the expenditures. For 2024, we ended the year with about $5.9 million in reserves. Our two-month, our two-pay period would be about $5.5 million. So as you saw during the budget process, we did intend to bring that down just a little bit for 2025, so we have anticipated spending more than we bring in as a way to bring down those reserves to not be over-reserved in that area. In the operations fund and the referendum fund, those are basically property tax revenue funds, so we get those payments twice a year. So we look to have more of a six-month reserve level. In the operations fund, we have a balance of $15.6 million. A 50, a six-month balance would be about $17 million, so we're still building that up just a little bit to get to that six-month reserve. In the referendum fund, we are at $4.1 million, half, six months would be a little over $4.5 million, so we're still building that up just a little bit. Health and dental trust, we have a balance of $5.6 million, which is an increase of $4.3 million. We look at this fund, if we have a reserve level of 30% of the next year's expected expenditures, we then put that extra money towards HSAs for our employees. We're not quite at that level yet, so that balance is still strong and good. And in debt service, we're at $2.8 million. Any questions then on the financial report?
Questions from the team? Okay.
Next is our property tax rate. As part of the budget process, our advertised rate was 1.0178 for 2025. When it was all said and done, it came in at nine, or .9981, which is a slight reduction over 2024's rate. And as you can see, '21, '22, those were the effects of the referendum. Dr. Phillips, staff, and board at that time were assuring to the public that we would keep it below 101 and try and reduce that. Another thing we've been able to do, even with the envisioned 2030 projects and the bonding that we're doing, we were able to remain net neutral for the year. So we're really proud of that. And state average for '24 was $1.05. We won't have the state average for 2025 for another month or so, and when I get that, I will bring that information back to you. Any questions on the tax rate?
The only question I have regarding property tax rate is, is there a way to present how that compares to the assessed value increase over the last couple of years? Because that's the biggest issue. Like, our tax rate is neutral, but assessed value is what is hitting everybody. Certain people don't understand that, so maybe compare those numbers to bring some light to that.
Could do that. What we can control is the tax rate.
I'm not saying you have control over that, that's the county assessors are tracking.
Thank you. Don't mean to throw her under the bus, but yes, we can provide that information for This is a little bit off topic, but at the beginning, you talked about the state board of accounts and the two-year audit. What was the timeframe that they covered with their two-year audit? July 2022 to June 30th of 2024. Okay. And then, how long are they down here when they do that work? It's changed over the years. They now sub it out to auditing firms. Crowe did our audit this year. We began meeting, Paula and our staff, we began meeting with them November-ish, late October, early November. Back and forth, they have a website where we can upload a lot of our information, they have access to Gateway, the state site, to pull a lot of our information down. And then in January, they present us, early January, they presented us with a preliminary report, we were able to respond, and then today was the final hearing. And last but not least, our extracurricular, I can't say the word, our ECA account. These are funds that each school has for their extracurricular activities, there I did it. Starting in '21 or '22, we were able to start investing these funds. That fourth column is the amount we have invested currently at Raymond James. That total, that $947,000 is not included in the December '24 balance, but if you add the two together, you can get what each school has. For the year, or for the six-month period, July 1 to December 31, we were up about $400,000. Again, strong fall, where there's a lot of fundraisers that happen. And then in the sports world, North and East, all of their competitions against each other happened pre-Christmas, so we have really great attendance, really great revenues from those sports at that time. Second semester, we'll see these balances drop a little bit, so when we come back to you in July with this report, you'll see a little bit smaller number as those monies are spent.
So being new, it may be a silly question, but who has the authority to spend these funds at each school, and how does that process happen?
He's new to Ms. Lloyd's, so I'll step in on the school side of how these functions. So each building also has a treasurer, and so there's a certified, or sorry, a classified position, and so any expenditure is approved by both the principal and the treasurer at the building level, and there's a whole section of the state board of accounts guidelines for extracurricular accounting. And so at the January meeting, one of the approvals from the board was actually a bond to ensure each of the building treasurers as well.
These can be used for academics, athletics, and any teacher can submit a request?
This is, these are almost 100% clubs or extracurricular programming, so, you know, the athletic program is the bulk of most of the money that's up there, but if, yeah, if there's a club that's going to do a field trip, they probably already have a sub account in there. They do a fundraiser, money goes in, you all approve those fundraisers every meeting, and then they expend the dollars.
Thank you.
And within that, our staff does audit this monthly. At the end of each month, we do a reconciliation of the funds. Thank you very much.
Good evening. We are going to give our annual technology update tonight. Can't thank you for your time and your support to help us have the technology department that we have. So with me tonight is Brian Trivett, he is the lead over our operations. Brandy Coomer is over the education, and I'm the technology director. We have a fantastic team that's listed up there, including Asher, who's helping out with sound tonight, but really fantastic group that we've been able to work with for quite a while now. So by the numbers, this slide is an annual slide, but we have a lot. So we have over 100,000 assets, that does include devices, but also monitors to the microphones that you're speaking into tonight. I have over 14,000 user accounts and 2 million square feet of Wi-Fi coverage that we have to kind of update, and 100-plus systems. So those are software systems, some we host, some we don't, also includes some digital curriculum pieces as well. But we also have a lot of vendors that we work with and maintain those relationships from year to year. So finances, it's a very large investment that we've been lucky enough to have in our department. We spend about, this past year, $3.5 million in annual technology needs. Over a million goes directly to new student devices. Every first, fifth, and ninth grader gets a new device and will stay with them over the course of four years, and seniors get to take their device home after graduation. Another big piece of our finances is grants. We've had almost $3 million since 2019. That includes funding from federal and state that helps fund internet, hotspots, cybersecurity, software, family engagement, AI, and a lot more. Our state is really strong in terms of their ed tech use and support, which we've been able to take advantage of. So Dr. Phillips asked me to, like, what did it look like before we started? So Dr. Phillips and I started here the same year, and I found a strategic plan from 2001 to 2003, which was the year before we came, and this is just the stark difference of what it was like when we started teaching here. So from '17 to '28, staff members, a $1.8 million budget to $3.5. Some of the most shocking ones are software, there's only 13 district programs. to 3.5. Some of the most shocking ones are software. There's only 13 district programs that cost the 181,000, and now it's well over a million. And we have a lot of software programs. And then the devices were all in labs. We had around 2,000 computers. And now, again, we have a lot of devices, around 20,000 Chromebooks, laptops and iPads. All right. So every year, we try to cover an aspect of what we do. And we've, especially the last year and a half, has had a lot of questions about cybersecurity and safety and student safety. So we thought it'd be a good opportunity to talk to everybody about that. So our technology, and I actually talked to a group about this, and they were concerned that students were on devices all the time. And that is not the case. So we follow and support our UDL instructional framework. And that framework is all about having student choice and options. And that is how we view technology, is as a tool to help students learn. And we have a very diverse population, over 60 different languages, about 13% in the ELML group, 10% qualify for special education. And a device can help, you know, read aloud, can help translate. It is one of the most accessible ways to give content to students. We also make sure that they have a device. The devices follow the students all the way through. So as they're a first grader, it'll follow them to second grader and so on up. And over the summer, we'll move all of the sixth grade devices into the middle schools. And then as ninth graders, they get a new one. So there's no reason that they should, you know, kind of use somebody else's tool because everybody has their own device. We also work hard to make sure the device fits their needs. So there's large screen Chromebooks, there are touchscreen Chromebooks, regular Chromebooks, iPads, laptops, depending on what best matches students need. And we work with teachers on that. The other big piece, when we went one-to-one and had a stu, a learning management system, we adopted a digital citizenship kind of platform, which is common sense media. As a parent, it's great. You can go there and look at ratings on apps that your kids may have or movies, but it also has a lot of great content for our teachers. So our department has helped create advisory lessons for the high schools, have made other lessons available in Canvas that all of our teachers can use on a day-to-day basis. And if we get questions from parents, we usually are referring them back to articles that this platform provides, which has been really helpful. So getting into student safety, we do have a firewall that helps protect at least anything, any bad actors from coming in. But we also have a content filter that works anywhere. So it doesn't matter if they're at school or at home. And it also sends a report to principals of suspicious searches. So there's this long list, including words in different languages that our ELML department helped put together to alert our principals if there's something that they need to be worried about. And we also have a program called Bark that monitors all of our Google accounts. And if there's anything in there, self-harm, threats, violence, then it'll alert our principals immediately so that we can at least be aware of those situations. And that has been a helpful tool, again, for us to help make sure our students are safe over the years. All right, Brian?
Thanks, Nick. So we've had a lot of support, ooh, I was putting up the coast. We've had a lot of support as far as security practices and, ooh, what's that?
I'm all the way.
I'm all the way?
Is this okay right here?
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna try to talk and not blow everybody's ears out. We good? Okay. All right. So we have had a lot of support when it's come to cybersecurity across the district. We've talked with other technology groups and others across the state, and we feel like we have really a leading of the pack mentality when it comes to our practices and procedures. And we want to kind of dive into why we think that and what we're doing to kind of stay in the front of a lot of our peers across the state. So we operate under a kind of what we're seeing here as a pyramid, but the base of that pyramid is made up by what we know as the CIS or Center for Internet Security Framework. There's about 150 or so metrics that we measure against our practices, our procedures, and try to see what we can do to make things better. Or maybe we're doing things already pretty well. But we meet monthly, and we go to the people spot now, where we have a cybersecurity task force. We discuss the framework, what things that we're doing well, what things we need to improve on, maybe what's coming down the pike that we need to maybe address here pretty soon. And we have a lot of support from teams locally, from other groups nationally that we can bounce ideas off and get some thoughts and feedbacks on our practices and our procedures. Our third level there, we have infrastructure. Nick alluded to that a little bit earlier, but for infrastructure, we have a lot of great technologies in place with our firewalls, our monitoring. We have backups in case something happens. We have air-gapped backups that we can use to restore things if needed. There's endpoint protection on all of our devices. We do yearly pen tests, which is we engage a third party to basically try to break into our network and then give us a report on what they've done so that we can go through and mitigate and resolve those things before someone maliciously tries to break into our network, as well as doing regular updates for all of our devices. And the top level there is kind of what we put into practice, our two-factor authentication, just another level for our staff to protect their data, their students' data, other staff's data. We do self-phishing. So we send fake emails like a bad actor might, but if someone clicks on it, we give them some educational prompts to say, eh, maybe you look at this next time, or maybe think about it a little bit different this way. We have tabletop exercises where we simulate something happening, just mental exercises, but then we mark down and document what we could do in the future if this type of thing happens. We have complex passwords, again, more complexity, more security. And we limit the admin access on all of our devices. So anybody that used to be able to install whatever they wanted whenever, not even IT can we sit there on our accounts and install something directly on our desktops. So a little bit more secure across the board for all of that. So there's a few things we try to do that are a little bit more fun. I mean, cybersecurity can be kind of a drag and sometimes boring, but you can see here, we've started the first time ever a phishing tournament. It started today. So there are these self-phishing emails that are going out across the district. We're going to have building level winners, we're going to have district level winners, and we'll promote and show off those individuals for their attention to detail and then their success in that. But you can also see our little fishbowl. It's a traveling trophy that buildings get every quarter when we do these phishing drills. Whoever, whichever building has the lowest percentage of people that click on those messages, they get a bowl full of candy, get the bragging rights for the next quarter, and they get to share that with all the employees in their building. We have, you can see Nick's face there, taking a good picture of all of us. This is one of our cybersecurity tabletop exercises where we're talking through what might happen in some sort of an incident. And then in the opposite corners there, we have various security throughout the year trainings. And also, we celebrate Cybersecurity Month and do contests and just raise awareness across the district on best security practices and what everybody can do to keep BCSC safe.
I think part of that is being proactive. So we've met and talked to a lot of districts who have put these into place after an attack. And we just try to be as proactive as we can to prevent attacks as much as we can. What questions can we answer about security or technology?
Will the board be participating in this phishing tournament?
You are more than welcome to participate if you want. You will get those emails regardless if you want them or not.
No, you did answer my one question of whether it was, like, I'm hoping that we're not getting phishing into the network. So the self, self-diagnose phishing is, all right, that's where my question was going. So, thank you.
Sorry, I'm full of questions tonight. Can you talk just a little bit more about Bark? And how, this may not be a question for you, but maybe counselors, when that flag goes up, if a student has searched something, I mean, we have a lot of mental health issues. And so if a student is genuinely trying to look something up to maybe help themselves and it gets flagged, what does that, what unfolds next?
So there's, there's a couple of things, depending on the severity of it, but the principals are alerted first. So especially at the high school level and the cohorts, that whole team will work on it. And I've seen my wife go through that process. The middle schools would work with their counselors and then same on down to elementary. There's not as many in elementary, but we have had a few. Also tied into that is our wellness team with Janay Norman and Julie Miller. So they're alerted as well, as well as myself, kind of being the system administrator of that. So while, you know, it's not a kind of constant alert, it's, it's ones that you have to pay attention to, to make sure that we're keeping our students safe and making sure that, you know, the right help can be there.
Thank you.
I, I don't think I've ever asked about this, but typing class, when's the earliest age group that would take a typing class?
Good question. Um, and I'm not sure of the answer of.
The only reason why I ask is the two most important classes I ever took were typing and speech. And we use that, we use those every day. And it might get rid of some of the LOLs that we see when our kids text us if they knew how to actually use a phone line.
We've, we've had a typing program as a system, but in terms of how it's integrated in the curriculum and when they start using that, or if they're still using that, I'm not aware. But we can, we can get back to you on that.
One more real quick, too. My daughter graduated last year and has her Chromebook still at home, but she doesn't use it for college because it wasn't capable of doing some of the college stuff. There's going to be some kids that will want the Chromebook and some kids that don't. Is there a benefit to us to take the Chromebooks back and recycle them or donate those to other schools that might have use for them rather than sitting at home collecting dust?
Yes, potentially. So with the fourth grade devices and the eighth grade devices, we'll take the best of those. And, you know, some are used for testing or some are used for loners. Try to use those until we can anymore. But we have certainly had different groups reach out if we have devices, and we usually try to satisfy those. That does take board approval for the removal of those or disposal of them. So, you know, kind of every once in a while, you'll see that as an approval item. And we do try to do that. We don't, we don't try to hold them, I guess, in anticipation of that, but we've, we've certainly done that in the past.
And I think the, what I'm thinking, like locally, you know, the kids, for the most part, that are in schools do have a Chromebook available to them. But a place like a San Suci might be a good place to, you know, make a donation. And then, you know, they're, they're going to make a couple bucks off of them, but somebody's going to get something like that really cheap, so.
Yeah. And I, like Ivy Tech was asking us if we could actually think about starting the program of seniors taking them home. Laptops were a little trickier. So when we moved to Chromebooks for high school, it allowed us to do that because they had several students coming without them. So, you know, we definitely try to engage with our community in that.
So this is about technology in general. I, to me, I think one of the biggest challenges in technology is how it disturbs us when we're, no.
Well played.
Is that it's always changing. And I, I know I've seen you do a lot of creative things, but my question is, what, what's the biggest challenge you face in terms of training and in-service for teachers on the ever-changing technology? And, and what do you do to meet that challenge?
So that's a great question. I, I think we are extremely conservative in what we adopt as the district, and we're thoughtful about it. So I could go, you know, kind of year by year of like virtual reality was a big thing that a lot of schools invested in, and then it's kind of come and gone. So having educators and teachers, we have a group of teachers that we work with called Tech Titans that represent every building that we get feedback on. So like the adoption process, we're very thoughtful about that and practical, I feel. Keeping up is really difficult, especially now that everything is just in the cloud and they update it. Like I just saw a Google update on a form that I've never seen before. And it's like, oh, a new interface. So we have to work hard to update training, offer all the time. We try to be creative with it. But it does take a lot of energy and we have a lot of people that we, you know, kind of try to keep up to date as we can. Being involved in our organizations kind of helps us weed through some of that as well, which is extremely beneficial. We'll hear from vendors or hear from other school districts of what they're trying. We're very rarely the first to jump in because of that practicality and not, you know, we have a large district and trying to scale things is, is difficult. So we, you know, I, I don't know if I answered your question completely, but it, it is at least strategic in our point of trying to adopt what we can and support it and train for it.
Thank you.
I have one question. We use, we get a little application happy sometimes in my day job. And sometimes when you put in a new app, you think, oh, my gosh, I can't believe I did that. And sometimes it did exactly what you wanted it to. And then there's those few moments where you're like, that was really handy. I am pleasantly surprised with how impactful, positively impactful that was for us. What would that application be for, for you and your department? What's one you've put in place that you're really proud of?
I think, and again, it kind of started with a pilot, but Parent Square has been life-changing for us. It got rid of so many other outside communication tools that we were supporting or halfway supporting. And having that one constant communication tool along with Josh and his work has been really kind of that, that most recent kind of revolutionary type of tech that has helped everyone. Say before that is probably a one learning management system that helped us do e-learning, helped us prepare for the pandemic as best we could with one-to-one. But that, that next one for me has been Parent Square.
Thank you.
Now we are on to public comments. So anyone who wishes to come to a school board meeting and participate through public comments, there's a blue sheet that's always at the front of the, the house when you walk in the door, can sign up. It, it helps us if you kind of jot down what you want to speak about. And then we do have some, some rules. We ask that you do not say any particular names or a specific role within this corporation. We want to make sure that our comments are fair to people. You do have three minutes. There's a timer here that'll keep you on track and, and will remind you when the buzzer goes off. And then if it's a topic where you feel like someone before you has spoken and said the same thing, you can always pass and just say, I agree with, with so-and-so. And tonight we have one speaker, and it is Mr. Cole Bennett. Cole, are you still there?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Cole Bennett. I live on the north side of Columbus, and I'm here to speak once again to the issue of safety within our schools. And since your last regularly scheduled meeting on January 22nd, a shooting occurred at Anayak High School in Nashville, Tennessee. One student was killed and another was wounded. These events are not outliers. According to a CNN report done this month, 83 school shooting events took place in 2024 across the US. That's about seven per month. Like almost all school shootings today, the news quickly moves ahead to the next headline. Similarly to how BCSC made a statement regarding recent changes to immigration enforcement, I would like to see the same being applied to school violence. We as a community cannot be desensitized to these events. Kids are growing up in a violent world, but kids should not have to ask questions like, are we safe in school? The worst part is that since Sandy Hook in 2012, the number of school shootings across the US have increased by over six times. I've counted these school board meetings over the last year, and I've seen the increase in funding for school safety, and that is very much appreciated. I'd like to request that information on that money and how it's being used be shared with the community. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Next, we have requests for approval.
Thank you, Ms. Wieldon. So we have several approvals in front of you this evening. Under old business, we have Under old business, we have the minutes of the regular school board meeting from January 13th, the board work session on January 27th and the executive session of the board on, also on January 27th. Request approval of old business, item 6A as presented.
Request approval, I move that we approve item 6A, minutes from the regular school board meeting, the board work session and the executive session.
Mr. Nellen and Mr. Major. Mr. MacGyver, I was not able to attend on January 27th, so should I abstain from the approval? Okay, yep, okay, I will do that. Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve minutes from January 13th and 27th board meetings. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. Um, under new business this evening, we have our routine items of supplemental contracts, field trips and professional leaves, school fundraisers and the claims and payroll from the January pre-runs, the docket for February 3rd and two payrolls, January 10th and January 24th of 2025. We also have item 7E, which is an additional agreement. Last time we covered one of these, it was actually listed under the additional approvals for HR. And you have the details of that additional agreement in your packet. Board members have access to that in your packet. Item 7F is the policy package number three and represents the nine, I believe it's nine, policies that were presented at first reading in January, excluding, it's nine out of 10, the 10th being, I believe that's policy D 270, 175? Thank you, 175 on board and staff communications. And so item 7F reflects all of the policies that were read in January with the exception of that one that was discussed during the board work session. Item 7G is a Purple Star School resolution for our secondary schools. The board has previously passed this resolution for our elementary schools. This is Indiana Department of Education program that schools can go through a certain process, which includes the board passing a resolution in support to become a Purple Star School, which honors, essentially honors the veterans who have served both in the past and are serving now. And so I believe we're getting close to having all of our schools designated as Purple Star Schools. Also a reappointment of Dr. Laura Hack to the Bartholomew County Library Board. Approval of bus purchases, this is an annual event now that we have to order our buses in February to receive them by the next school year. I'm saying as in next is in 26, 27. So in order to get those in the summer, those have to be ordered in February. Uh, I, item 7J is a, a change to the guaranteed mask, maximum price contract for Schmidt Elementary School to reflect the addition of the bus, sorry, bus lot relocation. And item 7K is a change to the district calendar. I brought this up at the last meeting and since then we've discussed it with principals, CICs and all kinds of different groups to determine whether or not that would be disruptive to the community and didn't receive any, any feedback to the contrary. So item 7K would move the snow makeup day from April the 17th, sorry. It would move the professional development day from April the 17th, 2025 to May 22nd of 2025. And so the student instructional, in-person instructional day will be April 17th. That was scheduled to be a professional development day, but at the request of many of our teachers and our Columbus Educators Association leadership, the, having an instructional day on April 27th was a much more meaningful use of our time than moving it to the May 22nd, the, the day before the last day of school. So that's the request for approval there. If, if approved, we'll put out a new printed calendar and update our website and, and promote that in the public. I also want to point out during the board meeting publicly to members of the community that might have already scheduled something on that April 17th date, if they were going to be out of town since students were not scheduled to be in session on that day, work with your teachers and the principal. And as long as the work is made up for that day, if a student has to miss with parent permission, has to miss for something that was arranged beforehand, that can be made as a non-absence for those students. So if some, a student has perfect attendance up to that date or they can still, as long as they get all the work done and turn it in with a certain number of days, they still get credit.
That last one, was that, I don't remember seeing that in the board packet, maybe I overlooked it. Was it, was it listed in there?
Just as an approval item, there was no attachment or anything like that. So I request approval of items 7A through 7K as presented.
I would like to pull item 7J out for discussion just to make sure that I fully understand what that is because when I read the packet, it was not very clear. And I don't know if everybody saw what you sent me. I, I believe you three saw it, but I just want to make sure that we fully understand what that is, so.
Do you request to vote on that separately or just discuss the item in more depth?
Fairly discussion, just, just, just to fully understand what it is, so.
I think normally we do a motion and then we'll discuss after a motion has been made if we're, if we're okay with that.
Well, I don't, I don't think you need to, the motion would be to approve 7A through K and then discussion would just happen normally, right? So.
Mrs. Wieldon, I did get a question from one of the board members before the meeting on item I related to the bus approvals. As a reminder, I don't believe anyone has a technical conflict, but we have had board members pull that out so they can abstain because our specs normally include Cummins engines. And with some of our connections on that, we have pulled those in the past.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion excluding item I?
Excluding I?
Yes, please.
Okay.
So, so I would move that we approve items 7A through H and J and K as presented.
Mr. Nellen, do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Major. And, and then I think we want to discuss item J. So, Mr. Glick, do you want to share your questions for discussion?
Yeah, so the graphic that you sent me, which is item L 202 as described in the packet, I don't know if Jason or Logan received it, Whitney, I don't know if you received it or not. I have it pulled up if I, if you want me to share it with you. But it's basically, I want to make sure I'm clear, I know what exactly the project entails because there was.
I, I saw the layout that was in the packet, but I don't know exactly where this million dollars is going to be put. So, wasn't clear to me either.
Because, because is it, I know what the parking lot looks like now and based off this, I was, it says bus lot?
Sure.
Yeah.
So, um, so yes, it's, the purpose of that is to separate pedestrian, pedestrians and vehicular traffic from buses. So at Schmidt currently, if you're familiar, there's staff parking to the northern end of Schmidt and the buses pull in between the, that parking lot and the building and unload students. And there's a lot of pedestrians that walk across the bus lot, quite frankly, to get to and from the building. So this was, this was originally intended as part of the project when we put this out to bid with all the other bid categories a little over a year ago. We chose at the time not to approve bid package two mainly because we wanted to, we did the same thing with Parkside, mainly because we wanted to make sure that the budget was safe, quite frankly. And we didn't have any surprises when we came through and started construction. So now, now that we feel comfortable budget-wise, we rebid the project. It came back in right about the same pricing we had previously, actually had a couple more bidders this round. So we're awarding it. The budget has not grown overall, it just wasn't awarded the first time. This big category wasn't awarded the first time that we, that we issued when the board approved the other big categories. And the design hasn't changed in that last year, it was just a safeguard for, for budgeting purposes, so. But to answer your question a little more specifically, the, so the cars and the buses are two separate lots in the new design. So the buses would come off 27th Street into the bus lot and then right turn only onto Home Avenue to go southbound. And it just, it just separates those buses from, from car parking. And also that bus lot can be used as event parking for basketball games or something if it needed to be as well, so.
And then the, the road along the south boundary that goes around the field?
Yep.
Are we expanding that?
It's, it's.
Is that the plan?
Yes, correct. So it'll be, uh, the width will be doubled. So that's a car line now to get car pressure off of the adjoining side streets. That was done many, many years ago. But car lines have grown at our schools, at all of our schools. So the plan is actually, with your approval, that will be done this summer, in the summer of '25 to double the capacity in the car line, basically to get them off the, the city streets. And the bus lot to the north, to the north will be done in the summer of '26.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure the graphic wasn't entirely clear and the packet didn't have this graphic in it at all. And some of the wording is completely illegible, so.
I appreciate, appreciate your ask, absolutely.
So I, I live on that street and so I'm in the middle of the, the heart of the congestion every morning. So St. Bees, North Side, North, Schmidt, so on, so forth. And I will say that is one of the most hectic areas, I would say, in Columbus. From 7:30 to 8:15, I also pass the car line that goes all the way down California Chestnut, wraps around onto 25th Street and lines up in front of Greeks and the Snow Cone Place. And I can't imagine being a parent sitting in that line. I also watch kids dart across that bus lot every single morning in the dark. Parents drop off on the street or they, they park at my house or my neighbor's house and they walk their, their kid runs across there. And so I think it's a great, I think it's a great investment. I think it's a huge safety concern, so.
Yeah, I think, I think the only call out I have, and I, I wasn't aware of the drawing, so I apologize, is I think whenever we're doing scope changes, like we need to have some clear standard work, like here's the scope of the ask, here's the original budget, here's the new budget. Because like even when I'm looking in here, guaranteed maximum price goes up 1.1 million, but then the sentence at the end says, we're within budget, but it doesn't tell me what the budget was. And so I think when we look at like, because we're going to have a lot of these, right? There's, there's change amendments, there's expectations across all the facilities. I think we just need to make sure, you know, we have, like when we get the memorandums, clear scope of work, budget, change of contract. And then I think whenever we sup, supplement stuff to other board members, it'd just be good to go ahead and disperse to all at that point.
And to the point about, to the point about money, I think it is a good point, right? I mean, I think I saw a note in there that it said that we had saved, we made improvements and saved. Well, if we've offset it, then we're still spending the same amount of money. So I don't, it makes it easier to prove. But if we said our, our original budget was 17 million and we're going to spend 18 million now, now it's, where do we come up with the million dollars? And so for me, that's where it was, it was just a little bit of uncertainty there. And I, I appreciate you showing me and confirming. I understand what that is now better and it makes sense. Because if you're going to tear stuff out of the parking lot and you're going to replace that and build that bus lot, it just wasn't really easy to tell, like the before and after on, on what was sent previously. So from a, from a need to spend the money, I can see it. Now it's, if we've made improvements or if we have an original budget, I looked at, I looked at the original budget from the envisioned 2030 and what was in the packet from November of 2023 didn't have Schmidt on it. So that's where for me it was like, I can't, I can't compare because I didn't, I probably could have found it if I'd have gone through every single board packet, but it was more of a, do, can we get here today and ask a question too? So do we know what the original Schmidt estimates were that were voted on?
The total budget for Schmidt that was approved through, through bonding was 20.4.
And so you're still, even with this, what it's roughly 17 and a half, so, so you're two and a half under?
That does not include soft costs for architects, which is about 1.3 and a half or so.
So you're 1.2 under?
Yeah.
Okay, that's easier.
Thanks, thanks for your question. So appreciate the questions that, realizing now in hindsight, the, you hadn't seen much of the Schmidt content since you had approved it almost a year ago. So moving forward, I'll, I'll occlude two things in your approval. One, any visual of scope of work that can be of help to your point, Mr. Glick. And then also a summary of, just review of, of total budget and where we are on, on the project that's, that's before you, so. Thanks.
And, and one thing too, just for transparency for everybody else too, one of the things I mentioned to Dr. Bozeman was, we've talked about this in the past, this board packet comes out on a Thursday night. Most of us have a job and we're working on Friday. You get to look at it at some point over the weekend, which leaves you about this much time to ask questions and get answers. So, and, and then if you do get an answer, sometimes you don't have the ability to digest it quickly because you're working on Monday. So one thing I would ask again, because I asked this about a year ago, is can we work to try and get the board packets available to board members and the public one week in advance of a meeting so that we have the ability to come in and get these questions asked so that the meetings aren't as clunky, trying to get questions that could easily be answered in a five-minute conversation versus trying to do stuff over a weekend when it's really hard to contact people? Or respect their weekend time?
Okay.
Do you want me to respond then? So just, just so you know, Mrs. Chrisman, since, since we switched to board docs, we have, I believe every time gotten the board packet out to the public and the board members by 9:00 AM or, or 10:00 AM at the latest on Thursday. And doing so has pushed a whole lot of approvals and work up in the, up in the timeframe just to get them ready for that Thursday morning. And so the answer to your question is yes, but it will cause a lot of things to not be approved on the normal cycle that they are, that they, that they would be otherwise. Maybe better with the four weeks between board meetings that we're going to have, you know, that we started with this year. The delay from January's board meeting got pushed back a week, so we had one fewer week in there. But when we start getting four weeks, you know, it, it could be possible. But it, it was a lot of work and, and thank Mrs. Chrisman for, and everyone else who gets the, all of the content that comes to you, to us in time to have it reviewed and to you by Thursday morning.
I have a motion and a second, any more?
I have additional questions.
Sure.
My bad. Uh, line item, uh, where is it? I, is that the standard cadence now for buses? I noticed we got three general education buses, two, it looks like four specialty buses. Is that what the general, is that, should that be the?
I think we pulled that one out though.
It's okay, we're on.
My bad, I'm sorry. Okay, well, I'll, I'll hold the question. You're good.
Mr. McKean is here also, he's our transportation director, so he, he can answer additional questions that, that you may have. The answer is no for the most part to your question. So it does follow our bus replacement plan, yes. You may recall, we have a goal of having no buses older than 12 years old, so that follows with that. What Mr. McKean and his team have done have introduced as scheduled, they, you know, this has been a plan for, for a while now of replacing those activity buses that you see here on your, which is not our typical cadence, but was planned. He can give you more detail, but those activity buses, typically they're 14-passenger white buses, which you'll approve tonight, are actually two different types of activity buses. But they, they run for girls golf, they run for students that are under, making evento that were transported between counties. He has a team that, that runs students to Indianapolis every day. He has a team that, that runs students to Indianapolis every day for specialty schools, and they are, they're in need of replacement. So if that answers your question.
Right. We have a motion and a second for seven A through H and J and K. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Motion carries seven zero.
And I would make a motion that we approve item seven I, approval of bus purchases.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Nellen and Mr. Glick. I will abstain from the vote. All those in, oh, any further comments or questions on seven I?
I already took my outturn, so.
Or, or God, okay, okay, great. All those in favor of approving item seven I, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Motion carries six zero.
The five human resources recommendations this evening consist of one appointment, three resignations, and one leave of absence. I request that you please approve the personnel recommendations as presented.
I move that we approve line items A, eight alpha through Bravo this time, sorry.
Mr. Glick, do you have a second? Mr. Major? Any questions or comments?
If we are going to date A and B, there are no additional human resources recommendations for this evening.
Thank you. All those in favor of approving human resources recommendations A and B as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Board input and review. Mr. Major, I'll start with you again.
Yeah, I would like to just congratulate Mrs. Udi, the East Girls Wrestling, Southside Spell Bowl team. I think everybody will probably say the same thing there. The big one I wanted to talk about is I think we have a future Hall of Famer in, in waiting here in Mrs. Haynes. Mrs. Haynes was ultimately the leader of the Robo Rodeo Event that was held at East just a week or so ago. And that, that event had probably somewhere between 60 and 70 teams. I can't remember the exact number. From what I had heard, I'd overheard somebody say that it was the second largest robotics event in the state of Indiana. They would have had probably the title for largest if they hadn't had four or five teams back out. One of the other things, I don't know, Dr. Phillips, if you heard anything different, but I think I even heard that it wasn't just the second largest in the state, but it might have been second largest in the country. So I don't, I don't know where we stand with that, but it was really a, a, a great event. I was able to be there all day, saw a lot of cool things happening that the kids were doing, lots of different designs, a lot of creativity. Throughout that, I think we only had like four or five teams miss their, their cue. When you have 60 to 70 teams and they're going multiple rounds, there were, there were several hundred of events that occurred during that day. So it was very well put on. Like to thank those at East, from all of the administrators, all the way down to the janitors that had to help clean up the mess at the end for putting on such a great and welcoming event for not just Columbus, but for those in the state that traveled here to participate. So great event, and I would encourage other, others out there to volunteer for those events if you have the opportunity. So thank you, Mrs. Haynes and all the volunteers.
Mr. Major, I'm just going to jump a bandwagon there. Two things, I just got stopped on Saturday by Mr. Wolford, Coach Wolford at Central, who said that at the event this Saturday, the fifth team from Central qualified for state. So that means every STEM robotics team at Central has now qualified for the state event. And then also, I want to, because Nick and his team presented tonight, just add the fact that the technology group and Mrs. Haynes has told me the same, they could not have done what they did without our tech folks being a part of that throughout the district, even not just with competitions, but, you know, throughout the course of the year. So it's really become, like you said, the size and scope of how quickly this has grown. It's become something that really takes a lot of resources, and I'm, I'm proud that we have those resources for our kids.
I'll just jump on the bandwagon too. So kudos to, to Mrs. Haynes and to Mrs. Harden. I thought it was a great event. I got to volunteer upstairs and make robot circuits as part of a senior project at the mini STEM lab, STEM lab that day. And it was really remarkable to see the number of students and then their younger siblings who were being exposed to, to that, those types of activities. So great day, great, great day. And congratulations to East and Southside. This was a great meeting.
Echo the comments of Mr. Major and Ms. Lloyd. In addition, I'd like to point out some honors that some of our students, high school students, have received in recent weeks. The Indiana All-State Honor Band has been announced, and from Columbus North High School, there are three members of that all-state band, Luke Hensley on trombone, Santi De Luna on tuba, and Cameron Shute on percussion. In addition, the Indiana Jazz Educators Association has announced its all-state jazz ensemble, which from Columbus North High School will include Grant Barker in the percussion section on drums. So congratulations to those students and the directors who make that possible.
The recognition's going. I wanted to, this is near and dear to my heart, the Columbus FFA novice and senior teams, which includes members from East, North, Central, and Northside, place first place in parliamentary procedure, and they advanced to the state on February 8th for Robert's Rule of Order, which again is near and dear to my heart. This is not simple, and it's pretty amazing that these kiddos have mastered, mastered this at the state level. So look forward to them going forward.
Congratulations to, one of the things we approved for field trips tonight was a trip for the Columbus North Cheerleaders to the national finals in Florida. So congratulations and best of luck to them. Also, this was in our Friday notes, but commendations and congratulations to six BCSC teachers that qualified for 15,000, I think it's $15,000 Lilly Teacher Creativity Grants, Chad Russell and Amelia Shaw, both from North High School, Brett Finley from CSA Lincoln, Krista Reardon and Arisha Spurgeon from Northside Middle School, and Mandy Keel from Southside Elementary. And last, a story, a book buddy story, I do book buddies on Monday at Schmidt, and, and I always start off, one of the nice things about doing Monday, you can start off with a conversation was, how was your weekend? How's your day going? Well, today, one of my book buddies, she said, I am so excited because today is STEM Day and I get to go to this, my STEM class. And she proceeded to tell me all the exciting things that they're doing in STEM and just confirmed to me that it's working. Our, our focus on STEM is getting to the kids, and, and she was just so excited about what they're doing.
I'll start this off with recalling item seven G, which is the Purple Star Schools. As a service member, means a lot to me. So for those of you who are in the room that may experience this, or those who are going to watch this, my phone is always available, my email is always available. If I don't know the answer, I know somebody that might have the answer. So use me as a resource to help with you finding your resources. Next, over the weekend was wrestling sectionals. This weekend is wrestling regionals down in Jeffersonville, North and East, qualified quite a few, and will continue their efforts through the state tournament. And girls' basketball starts sectionals, I believe, tomorrow. So East and North will be competing this week, so that, that's going to be good, and then swimming as well. So a lot, lot on the agenda athletically. And lastly, I had the pleasure of assisting in the Parkside STEAM event, which is a STEM night, and probably had easily 75 kids show up and had four or five different stations, all with little trinket experiments and stuff, and everybody seemed to be pretty heavily engaged and having a lot of fun. So that was pretty cool to, to see that.
The downside about being at the end is you just start crossing off all your things that you were going to talk about, but it, it's okay. I, I want to echo everything that we, we discussed. I also want to kind of give a special shout out to Mrs. Udi as we were looking through her file as part of the committee, and not to share too much, but the number of students that wrote on her behalf and the number of community members was overwhelming, and a lot of it also is, she was also one of the key leads for the longest time, I believe, at Central for the DC trip, which is memorable for many going through. So I just want to re-echo that, congratulations. It was not a very difficult decision to select. The hardest part is just picking only one, and so that was definitely a great experience. And then the other thing was, some, I have two daughters that are also book buddies, so I thought I'd bring that up, is a lot of the book buddy mentors are getting them ready for testing and getting them prepared. One of mine's third grade and one's second grade, so both at that critical year. And so I just want to shout out and say thank you to all of them.
I believe I saw Indiana jumped to number six nationally for reading, by the way, so big shoes to fill this year.
We, we were a big part of that, I'm going to say that. Dr. Hacks not here, but giving her credit for that. And I'll just add, thanks to Nancy Millsbaugh and her team for the food, for the reception this evening. If you, before you leave, go out through the kitchen and grab something on your way out, if there's any leftovers left. And then also welcome to Asher, who's been helping with sound back here the last couple of meetings. And thanks to Nick and his team, I don't know if you noticed, but the big speakers aren't in the room anymore, and so this is, it's been a year and a half, they've been probably talking about what might be best for this room, so new mounted cameras. So when you watch this, it's probably going to look a little differently and hopefully sound a little differently. And then just on a personal level, you know, she's gone already, but could not be prouder to call Carla Udi colleague and a friend. She, like, like Mr. Manuel, when I was a brand-new administrator as an assistant principal at Central Middle School, she treated me with kindness and grace, which I needed a lot of at the time. So congratulations, Carla and her family.
Hey, next meetings, we have an executive session this Saturday at 8:00 AM, so that will be board members only, and then actually right after that, there's an ISBA training session that all of us are going to participate in, so that will be, that'll be good for us, new and old board members. I think we'll all learn something there. And then we have our regular board meeting on March 3rd in this room at 6:30 PM. Okay? So nothing else, I'll call meeting adjourned. Thank you.